Hello. Thank you for watching the 2018 Fall Legislative Forums hosted by the Ashland Chamber of Commerce. I'm Cindy Bernard, past president of the Ashland Chamber of Rogue Valley Roasting Company, and chair of the Chamber Legislative Committee for 2018. Moderating the discussion with me tonight is Marie Lang. Welcome, Marie. Owner of Ashland Homes Real Estate and past president of the Ashland Chamber. Tonight, we will be introducing incumbent Steph Seffinger and her opponent Carol Voison for City Council, position four. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Each election year, the Ashland Chamber hosts legislative forums as a service to the Ashland community. The Ashland Chamber is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that does not have a PAC. It is not affiliated with or a member of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce or its political action committee. This year, we are also hosting forums for the Ashland City Council positions two, three, and six, Parks Commission positions three, four, and five, State Senate District Three, State Representative District Five, Jackson County Sheriff, and Jackson County Commissioners Positions One and Three. All candidates were sent the questions prior to the forum. The forum tonight is being recorded, edited, and will air on local community television, the RV TV website, and the Ashland Chamber website, along with additional election information at ashlandchamber.com. The Ashland Chamber has many decades of long relationships within the business sector and through effective community partnerships with businesses, SOU, the hospital, and OSF, and the city of Ashland, among others. We promote business and the community by providing business resources, creating events such as Festival of Light and the Fourth of July, promote tourism, the economy, improve the quality of life, and serve as a welcome center for our city. Over 700 businesses are members of the Chamber, representing thousands of employees and jobs and hundreds of community volunteers who are engaged citizens helping to make our community better every day. We believe in collaboration and effective relationships which we hold dear. After each candidate is introduced, they will have a two-minute opening statement to discuss why they are running for their position and what skills and accomplishments qualify them to serve as an Oregon elected official. Following the opening remarks, candidates will be asked three questions with three minutes each to respond. A bell will ring when the candidate has 30 seconds and then 10 seconds remaining. If there is time, they can also give a two-minute closing statement. They must adhere to the time restraint. Additionally, each candidate had to sign a consent form in order to participate. The Ashland Chamber is a private, nonprofit, mutual benefit association. We require that the candidates refrain from any form of speech that includes profanity, obscenity, hate, racism, or vulgarity, or that is insulting or offensive to any ethnic, religious, political, or other identifiable group or individual, as determined by the forum moderator. A violation of this rule will cause the candidate to be removed from the forum. If necessary, a correction to the record will be made by our moderator or host if there are inaccurate or inflammatory comments made. We expect and will insist on respectful behavior. This is a forum, not a debate between the candidates. If time allows, excuse me, we may have follow-up questions for the candidates, in which case the candidates will have two minutes to respond, again using the bell system. Please note that the candidates' introductions were submitted by the candidate. And tonight, the candidates have drawn numbers, and Stephanie Seffinger will be first. Stephanie Seffinger has served Ashland. She is currently on the Ashland City Council, is co-chair of the Ad Hoc Climate Energy Implementation Plan Committee, is on the Senior Services Advisory Committee, was an Ashland Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and an Ashland Forest Lands Commissioner. Steph's reelection priorities: Budget process that is participatory, effective, and focuses on basic city needs; affordable housing; robust economic plan to support local business, growth, and expansion, and attract new green business; strengthening senior services; fire safety; climate change plan implementation; development of regional and local response to homelessness and recovery support. Welcome, Steph.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate the Chamber putting on this opportunity for citizens to hear what the candidates have to say, so thank you. The reason that I feel I'm running is because I love Ashland. My son was born here. I have strong roots to the community, and my mother was one of the first principals in Los Angeles, so I have a strong need and desire to serve the community and to see women in leadership. I feel like I'm in a critical point with a lot of the projects I'm working on as a city councilor with climate change and with senior issues, and I really want to finish what I've started. I think my skills include the ability to bring people together. I like to be inclusive and hear all voices, which isn't always easy, because it's easy to listen to one voice and generalize to whatever, to think that that's what everyone believes, and that's not always the case. So, I try to listen in lots of different ways to people. As a school psychologist, I learned to work on looking at goals and breaking them into objectives and to benchmarks to be able to see if we were making the progress we needed. Accomplishments include working on climate change. I helped author the Forest Lands Commission's update. I worked with affordable housing, voting for measures to increase homelessness support. I thank you. I think my time is almost up, so thank you.
Thanks, Steph. Carol Voison. Dr. Carol Voison earned her doctorate from the Graduate Theological Union in Berkeley, California. Her research focused on systematic theology, excuse me, and doctrine of the Trinity. Her professional career and graduate education included Pacific School of Religion and Duke Divinity School. Since then, she has owned her own business in the Bay Area, taught ethical thinking for the 21st century at SOU, from which she recently retired. Community service before Ashland included serving on several commissions in cities in which she lived. Upon moving to Ashland, she was appointed to the Housing Commission, served on the Facilities Analysis Committee, ran for the Second District House of Representatives seat. Go Jamie! She served on the Ashland City Council 2008, 2016. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you, Cindy. First, I want to thank the Chamber for holding this forum. I think it's a very important one, and I appreciate you for, really, inviting almost everyone who's running for office, and I think that's really admirable, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank the crew here at RV TV, the director, and also SOU for keeping RV TV well and alive in these facilities. So, many thanks to all of you. I'm Dr. Carol Voison. I have a doctor in systematic theology, which provided me the entree and the skills to teach at SOU the course Ethical Thinking for the 21st Century, and for 16 years, I taught there. And I recently retired and am enjoying that immensely. Our city of Ashland is at a turning point. We have a choice to make. We can maintain the status quo and leave things like they are and just keep going as we are, or we can face our fiscal crisis, which is monumental, and in doing so, involve citizens in the dialogue for making very serious questions about the future of our city. I trust this forum will convince you, those who are in the audience, to vote for me and for those facing incumbents. Together, we can make a difference in the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Carol, you are going to get the first question. What are Ashland's strengths and how can we build upon them to foster economic vitality?
I think Ashland has one particular strength, and that strength is the people of Ashland. And I'll tell you why. The people of Ashland are compassionate. They're empathetic. They're skeptical, and well-educated, and they're generous people. That's why I really want to serve as a city councilor. They also are our strength, and they have an expectation, and I've heard this again and again. Their expectation is that we involve them, the people of Ashland, in the decision-making of their city, of our city. With this strength, though, comes a very deep weakness, and that weakness is that the latter isn't happening. Citizens are not being involved in the decision-making of our city. Citizens are loud and clear about the fact that they feel they are not being heard. Some of them even feel deep resistance to even going to a city council meeting and speaking, because, one, they're afraid they won't be heard, and, second, they may even be ridiculed at one point or another. They really are not willing to go to the city council. That is really, I think, a very serious weakness that we need to address. Let me give you an example. Several citizens serve on city commissions, and those commissions, the citizens on them, make recommendations to the city council. They work hard on those recommendations, and then they're taken to the city council, and several times, those decisions, those recommendations taken to the council are not accepted. And what also sometimes occurs, that really is very disheartening, is that there's no reason given for a recommendation from a commission, no reason given for not accepting that recommendation, and that really needs to change. So, we can go in the same direction we've been going, along with the status quo, or we can make some radical changes and really make our city the city we want it to be.
Thank you. Steph, what are Ashland's strengths and how can we build upon them to foster economic vitality?
Well, I think I'm going to keep my answers to looking at what the strengths of Ashland are, because I think that's the question. And I think our strengths are the people in our community and the vitality they give the community, the diversity that we have. I see Ashland as an incubator for creativity, for new ideas, for developing new concepts and energy, and I think that's really, really, an important quality that we have. We have a quality of life to be proud of. We have a beautiful park system. We have cultural events. We have beautiful city environment. I think these are really important to build on. We support education. We have an amazingly vital and diverse educational system for our young people, as well as upper education opportunities, which really help provide a skilled workforce for our city that we should be proud of. We have a safe environment. We've worked to make our downtown vibrant and safe for families, as well as tourists, as well as our citizens. We very much care about providing infrastructure that is forward-thinking in terms of safe water, in terms of looking at our basic needs, and being sure that we have long-term plans that really support positive growth for our city. I think it's a place really to be proud of, and I just love the creativity, the artist community, the innovators. We have a science museum, and we're a small place, and I think that, I think it's a place to really be proud of, and I think we can do amazing things. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you, Steph, to answer the next question first. Please define how you see the role of a city councilor and what you think will be your biggest challenge.
The role of a city councilor is pretty defined in our charter. It's a legislative role. It's the office that looks at laws, ordinances, and developing the legislative part of our city. In addition to that, I think our city councillors have another responsibility in terms of learning about a variety of functions that other cities don't have, understanding our wastewater system, our water system, our electric system. You need to have a lot of information about the workings of all of that, and that's one of the things I've spent the last couple of years learning about, is how the city functions. I think also a very important role is reaching out to people, and it's something I think I'm really good at. I have been really active in listening to people from every part of the city. I work at going to events. I work at talking to people individually. On the voter's pamphlets, I have my phone number, so if somebody wants to call me and ask questions of me, they can do that. I try to make myself really accessible so I know what people in the community want. The response that I've gotten from people is, when I talk to them, is that they do feel listened to, and I think that that is really a strength that I have and a strength that's important to have as a city councillor. So, I'm excited by the role, and I'm excited about the fact that... One of the things I think is really important is to be able to be effective as a city councillor. You have to be able to work with the other city councillors, and you have to be able to come to decisions that everybody will agree with in terms of making progress towards a goal. So, there is some need to be able to develop positive relationships with the councillors, as well as ask the tough questions, so that you can come to decisions that are wise. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, please define how you see the role of a city councillor and what you think will be your biggest challenge.
Having been a city councillor for eight years, I can say that the role of a city councillor is to make policy for the city, and that's an extremely important role. And in making those policies, a city councillor must be in touch and represent the people of Ashland, all the people of Ashland. For instance, if I should win, Steffi will still be one of my constituents, voting against me. So, anyone who, all of Ashland's citizens are represented by a city councillor, and to me, that's really important, to listen to all of them. And in listening to our citizens and finding out what their needs are, especially those who are being affected by a policy, that is extremely important. When the normal neighborhood was being developed, there were hundreds of people being affected by that, and it's not so much that you wait for them to come to you. You go to them. You go into their homes, and you find out what the issues are, and you talk with them, and you find out where they're coming from, and you empathize with their issues, and it's not NIMBY. Everyone says, "We have NIMBY issues." We don't. When people's lives and when their neighborhoods are at stake, you listen to them, and to me, I do that very carefully, and I represent them, and I think that's one of the main roles of a city councillor. Now, a challenge. A challenge for me, should I be elected, will be my ability to persuade fellow councillors to take a very serious look at the motel hotel tax and to see what's happening with that tax, because we have $5 to $6 million of revenue that comes to us through the hotel motel tax. Of that, 30% needs to be spent on tourism, and at this point in time, it seems to me it's, the challenge will be for me to introduce, and for the Chamber, to take a look at the $400,000 to $500,000 that you receive every year, and take a look at that and how it's being used. And to me, that will be a challenge, because it's a specific thing I want to take to the council.
Well, I will just make a comment on that, because that is looked at very thoroughly every year. There's a full report that goes to the city, very detailed report where every dollar goes. So, I think that the Chamber does take that seriously and looks at it seriously, to do all of the good work that it does in the city, but I just wanted to make that point, that that is something that's ongoing.
My question will be, is that too much? And are there other ways we can use that money to bolster our businesses, especially those who've been hurt deeply by the smoke this summer? There may be ways we can directly help them with this funding.
I think I'm going to step in here so that we don't have a back and forth here, but let's move on to the next question. I appreciate you.
Yeah, I was going to move on. I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, so, the next question I'm going to give to you, Steph. Tell us the top three issues or challenges you feel Ashland is facing.
Okay, I think they're really interconnected, but I think that they're affordability, climate change, and addressing our vulnerable populations. When I say affordability, I talk about the affordability of housing as one part of it. People are spending more and more of their income on housing, and there is less and less available housing, and the less rental housing, and prices have gone up. So, this is an important issue to address. I think that also the issue of inflation. We have a lot of seniors living here, and they live on a fixed income, and we're living longer, and so that's an important issue to consider. I think that, and believe that, there's also an increase in the cost to live here, and that's something that we need to seriously look at. It's more expensive for everybody now. Wages are lower. There are less jobs that really provide a living income for people. I'm well aware of that. I'm living on a fixed income, and I know what that's like. I think that another issue is climate change. We've had a smoky summer. The climate is changing. The city is going to need to do a lot of work with both prevention. We are looking at a climate action plan where we're working on both addressing climate change and adaptions that we need because of climate change, and it's very important to realize that doing that takes dollars. It's taking more dollars for all of our country to deal with the effects of climate change, fire disasters, and so having an effective program to help with emergencies, to help with disaster relief, to help with citizens prepare for the changes that they're going to have in terms of the need for fire control. And the last was vulnerable populations and how to deal with the homeless situation and helping people prevent themselves from being out of poverty. Those are the issues I think that are most important right now.
Thank you. Carol, can you tell us the top three issues or challenges you feel Ashland is facing?
I think there are three issues facing us. The budget, the budget, and the budget, and I'll explain what I mean. The budget, at one level, we must decide, and we can do this together, what we can live without. We can no longer continue to spend what we don't have. We have to have a balanced budget, and in order to do that, we're going to have to decide what can we live without. PERS, health insurance costs, are a real threat to our sustainability, our economic sustainability. We must face that as a reality, and we need to do it now. It's not something that's going to go away, and in order to do that, we, as a city, as citizens, we need to discern among ourselves and in dialogue what can we live without. The budget, another part of the budget issue is this. We need to prioritize our infrastructure projects that are costing millions of dollars. $23 million for a new water treatment plant, $6 million for an oxidation ditch at the wastewater treatment plant, and it goes on. We have to prioritize what it is we can afford in infrastructure projects. And then the budget. We need, and as a councillor, I will, support and use the citizens on the Citizens Budget Committee. When these citizens ask for information, that will enable them to make a decision about the budget, or to inform themselves and their fellow citizens about what's happening with the budget. They need that information, and they should receive it, and I assume that will happen in the future. And that is something that I will work to do, that is, to support the citizens on the Budget Committee and to work towards a balanced budget, and to prioritize our infrastructure projects, which are costing us millions. So, our issues are the budget, the budget, and the budget.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to jump to you for the next final question here. How do you intend to work collaboratively with community partners such as the Chamber, for example? Is that Carol's question?
Yeah, Carol. Oh, for me? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said Steffi.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, can you start the clock again?
Yes.
Didn't know that. All right, so collaborative partners, I think there are four. That is fellow councillors. A councillor needs, as Steffi said, needs to be able to be in dialogue with her fellow councillors, and, you know, we all don't need to agree. We need to be able to present our cases to one another, be open to change and to question one another. That's what you need, I think we need to do in terms of collaborating with fellow councillors. And then I also think it's most importantly that we address and help citizens deal with the issues. So, we need to collaborate, our partners, our citizens, our constituency. We must keep in touch with them. At the center of... At the center of our government are our citizens, not our own personal best interests, self-interests. It's our citizens we must focus on. So that's where I would be a collaborative partner with fellow citizens. And also, inner cities. We need to be involved with talent in Phoenix, in projects, whether they're infrastructure or whether there are other kinds of ways in which we, and there are many ways, in which we can collaborate. And those things we need to, those issues and ideas and programs, we need to collaborate with other cities. And I think our council would be really invited to do that, and it would be very helpful to be able to do that, and find ways we can work together. And then I think other collaborative partners would be the nonprofits in Ashland. We need to coordinate what, or help them coordinate, or see how they're coordinating. There are various efforts in our city. And then the city needs to step aside, the city council needs to either step aside or find ways in which we can support them. So that kind of collaboration, I think, is really important. And to your specific issue of collaborating with the chamber, I think that's important. And I think we both, I think we need to be in dialogue. If I'm a councillor, I think that's very important. And I think also, find ways in which we can find economic vitality in our community. And that's what I want to lift up this book. Local Economic Development in 21st Century. Every councillor, every citizen on the Budget Committee should read this book. It's about Ashland, and it's about economic sustainability.
Thank you. Steph, how do you intend to work collaboratively with community partners such as the chamber?
Well, for one thing, I think I already do. I've worked with the chamber as a liaison. I also work with programs like the Wellness Committee, which is a very important committee in terms of looking at what it takes to create a well community, what it takes to connect all of our community partners together for the betterment of all of our citizens. I believe that I've worked very hard to look at senior issues. One of my accomplishments recently is getting the Parks Commission and the city to have a joint meeting, which will occur in October, to address senior citizens in a more comprehensive way. I think that I have a growing understanding of what all of the community partners do. I've visited all kinds of different nonprofit agencies. I go to meetings. I'm going to a meeting tonight on concern with violence against women. I've probably spent 30 hours a week in the last weeks going to meetings, finding out about what different community partners can offer, and making them feel welcome, and making them feel that the city supports their efforts. We give community grants and social service grants to help our community partners grow. We've given Ollie money at their open house to have more representation from all of the different partners that are out there to help seniors, for example. I've been attending piecemeals that occur on Friday with Vanessa and Jason Hawke, and been very impressed with the work they do. So I'm investing more in looking at organizations that help the homeless, looking, working at, looking at what the, how the resource center has changed. It's been a wonderful time for me in learning about the community, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a follow-up, if you don't.
Oh, you do?
I do. Unless you would like to go. I just, because we were talking collaboration, I think both of you would agree, as a current councillor, and as having been on council, that collaboration within the council is a really big part of moving the city forward. So I guess my question to each of you is, you know, what technique or what role do you play in collaborating and trying to bring your fellow councillors together on decisions? Again, referring to, you're not always going to agree about everything, but how do you try to get to that consensus? So I'm not sure what order we're in now.
Well, she's currently on council, so it's been two years.
Okay, we'll let you go.
Okay. I think I listen to all of the council members, and try to understand what their strengths are, and listen to those strengths. I think that trying to build consensus, and trying to understand people that have more experience than I in certain areas, I try to listen to their wisdom. No one councillor ever makes a decision by themselves. It's always working together. It's always finding where we can compromise, and where we can find a common way of moving forward. I think in the last two years, our councillor, our council has accomplished many, many things. One of them, with the budget, and trying to help people understand how we spend our money. We've done things like open.gov, and we're working on improving the process all of the time. I find that that's one of my strengths, is being positive, looking at positive ways to work together, avoiding division, avoiding making people feel fearful or feel wrong, and trying to be positive in my relationships. Thank you.
With fellow councillors, I think it's really important to develop a relationship. And that relationship needs to, at bottom, have respect and trust of the other. And that's something that you build. And it builds over time. It's not something that just happens. You sort of have to earn respect. And that's what I think, being a councillor and with other councillors, that's what happens. Now, one of the things that, when I was on council, people kept saying, "Well, Carol's the one who always votes one to five." And that seemed to be a mantra that was being carried around. And, you know, we did some research and found out that I voted with majority 70% of the time. I was able to, with other councillors, find common ground. And not so much have a consensus, but what's really important is that we hear one another, and that we have a reasonable dialogue, so that we can see the intricacies of the decision we're making, and how it's affecting the lives of the people in our community, always keeping in mind that at the center of our decision-making are the people of Ashland, and that our decisions affect them deeply. And that is how I will work with other councillors.
Thank you. Thanks for indulging me.
So we have time, I believe, to do your closing statements, no longer than two minutes. But why don't we go ahead and start with you, Carol?
Thank you for, I'm glad we have time for our closing statements. Well, those of you who have listened to this, I want to thank you for doing so. And I hope you've come to some idea of the difference between Stephanie and me. And I want to point out to you what my focus and my dedication will be as your councillor. I will be committed to a budget process that is open, that's committed to balancing the budget, and also committed to involving citizens in some of the decision-making that will have to be made. It's a very serious budget process that's going to be coming up, and I will be deeply involved in that if I'm elected. Also, representing citizens is part of who I am as a representative. Representing the citizens of Ashland, not just listening to their three-minute speeches that they give at a council meeting or a study session, but actually going out to those citizens that are being affected by the decision-making going on in the council. Going out to those citizens, their neighborhoods, their stores, their businesses, and asking them, "How will this affect you? What is your input on this?" Because many don't have the time or the energy to make it to a seven o'clock meeting and wait around for an hour or two hours. I'll be there at your doorstep, asking you how we, the council, or me as your representative, can better represent you. So I hope that you will come to some conclusion and will vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Steph?
As your city councillor, I will represent all of the citizens of Ashland. I think I've been doing that. I do listen to all perceptions, all needs, and voices. I go to all kinds of events. I do talk to store owners, as well as members of the homeless committee, as well as my friends, my neighbors, the people at the YMCA, seniors. I feel like I'm very collaborative with our community, and I really want to work with all of the community. I think that I seek to unite and not to divide, not to criticize, but to come up with solutions to solve problems in a positive way, to look to the future, not to the past. I feel that I have a lot of work that I'd like to continue. I'm the Chair of the Climate Action Implementation Committee, and we have important work to do in implementing the goals that we've started. I have a lot of knowledge from Forest Lands Commission on forest management, and I think I'm sort of an expert in that area. I can really help a lot with moving ahead with issues of climate change. I care about our homeless community. One last thing. This picture, I think, represents me. It's on the Forest Bandersnatch Trail. It's about hope. It's about working together. It's about looking upward. And that's who I am. Thank you.
Thanks. Great. Well, again, I'd really like to thank both of you for being here tonight, Steph and Carol. It's an important thing for you to come and share your insights and perspectives with us and with the community. So thank you.
Well, thank you for holding the spin.
And thanks to Marie for being my sidekick and our capable moderator. And most importantly, I'd like to thank the citizens for taking the time to watch this and to learn about our candidates, so you can make a good decision. Thank you very much. And again, a reminder to watch for these tapings of all the different candidate forums at ashlandchamber.com.